The Alltech Media Group, a full-service video production, advertising and marketing company. For over three decades, we've been providing successful strategic ideas and media tools to small businesses, manufacturers, and government agencies. The Alltech Media Group is a one-source marketing solution. From videos in print to digital and social media for the manufacturing industry. Compare the difference in our customer service, the difference in our creativity, and the difference in our quality of work. For a free marketing evaluation, contact us today.
Welcome to the first of our two Marietta Chamber of Commerce candidate forums. I look forward to these every couple of years because it's always fun and it's an opportunity for the community to meet the candidates. This year's going to be a little different. This is the first time we'll be voting under the new district team system. Which means while you don't get to vote for everybody up here, we think it's still important for you to see who is running, kind of get a measure of the candidate, and know that that's who you'll have to deal with should they get elected even if they're not in your particular district. So, we are fortunate this evening to have five of our seven candidates with us. Ryan Cagertie and Scott Mittel were not able to join us, but we have Jonathan Ingram, Harry Ramos, Joshua Knight, Christie White, and Warren Konishek. And actually, the middle three folks are running for the same district. Jonathan is running essentially unopposed, and Warren is running against Scott Pittman, who is not with us this evening. So, with that, I'd like you to keep at stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. That would be terrific.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is the way it goes. The candidates drew numbers for their seating order this evening. Each candidate will go with two minutes for their opening statement. I'll be the moderator, and then I'll ask them a series of questions. The first question will go to the candidate in the first chair, and each candidate will have one minute to answer that question, and then each candidate down the row will have the same opportunity. And then the second question will start with the candidate in the second chair, and so forth and so on. At the end of the questioning, each candidate will have one minute to wrap up for their final closing statement. And Mr. Patrick Ellis from the Marietta Old Mar Chamber of Commerce will be our efficient timekeeper this evening, and he has a timer down here, and he has signs that he'll hold up saying, "You've got 30 seconds left, you've got 10 seconds left." And please shut up, it's time to leave. No, he is much nicer than that. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. And we'll start with a two-minute opening statement. We'll start with Jonathan Ingram.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. Even though at this point I'm not running with an opponent or having anyone run against me, I wanted to afford everyone the opportunity to listen to my responses to any questions that we may have. And I appreciate everyone being here tonight, I really do. I love our city. I've dedicated the last five years of my life, and if we're lucky, I'll dedicate the next four years of my life to this city and Marietta, to its people, because I love it that much, and I love everyone that lives in our city. We have a great city, and I think it's a unique experience. I've learned a lot over the last four years. There's a big learning curve for beginning a council member. You think you know a lot, and looking at my colleagues sitting down here, they all laughed at me the first couple of times we were in meetings, and somebody told me it's going to take 120 days to do something, and I'm like, "Really?" And I think Mr. Long remembers that, so there's a lot to learn. And I acquired a taste for shoes, because I've stuffed my foot so many times in my mouth over the last four years. So, I look forward to the next four years if I'm real lucky. Thank you for attending this evening.
Mr. Ramos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Harry Ramos, and I am honored and humbled to be here with everybody. Thank you so much for coming down and taking your time out of your schedule to listen to us plead and beg for your support. Originally, actually, I'm a transplant. I'm originally from New York City. The United States Marine Corps brought me out here in 2005. I've lived in the city since that timeframe. Up until 2006 is when I purchased my house. I've lived in District Two during that 10-plus-year period. I am a small business owner. I've had several businesses throughout my life. I graduated education. I went to Regent University. My major was Business Management, a minor in Government, and also had a Solicitor's Degree in Hospitality Management. I won't take up too much time, because I'm eager to get these questions going, but again, I look forward to the engagement, and I'll stay on afterwards for any further questions.
Thank you. If you could also do me a favor and just state which district you're running for.
I do apologize. I can't, but it must be out of practice. Again, my name is Harry Ramos, and I am running for District Two.
Mr. White.
I'm used to speaking without a microphone, if that's okay, in court. Can everybody hear me? Oh, you're recording? Okay, sorry. Sorry. First off, I'd like to thank SRCAR for hosting this forum. As previously stated, my name is Joshua Knight, and I'm a candidate for the District Two seat on the Marietta City Council. I am running to preserve the quality of life for the citizens of Marietta. I have been an attorney for 14 years, and I believe I would be a positive addition to the city council. My wife and I moved here 10 years ago, and when I got a job for the Riverside County Public Defender's Office. I am currently assigned to the Ritz and Appeals Division, and in that capacity, I help attorneys, my office, and the county deal with complex legal issues. And I hope to bring the same legal and problem-solving skills to city council. I've been interested in local issues since growing up in North County San Diego. And I have been a lifelong public servant, working with Santa Cruz, Kern, and Riverside counties. And I have been applying for Marietta commissions since 2000, and attending city council meetings since 2010. And I have been giving back to the community as a youth soccer coach for the last four years. My legal background, coupled with my love for our community, and desire to make Marietta a great place to both live and work, enables me to represent and serve the people of District Two and Marietta upon, to listen to the views of its residents, address our community concerns, and provide solutions for the challenges that we face. It would be an honor and privilege to represent District Two and Marietta. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Good evening, Mr. Wonderlick, Mr. Ellis, fellow candidates. Is that working? Hello.
Yeah, you traded.
Green lights. Okay.
Is that better? Yes. Good evening, Mr. Wonderlick, Mr. Ellis, fellow candidates, and our esteemed audience. My name is Christie White, and I'm candidate for Marietta City Council District Two. In 2002, I moved to Marietta Valley from Pasadena because of work and courses. I'm a Southern Californian native who is then lucky to live in Mexico City, Australia, and London. I previously served as a volunteer treasurer for our homeowners association, and successfully led the HOA back into legal compliance with state laws. In 2010, I went back to school and earned my Bachelor of Arts degree in Management from the University of Redlands while working full-time, so I know how to work hard and get things done. In 2015, I proudly purchased my home in Marietta. I'm close with my brother, who's a fire captain for the City of Orange in Orange County. Some of you know me as a volunteer court-appointed special advocate for a foster child, as a sworn officer with the Riverside County Juvenile Court where I defend innocent children, or as a City of Marietta Commissioner for our Parks and Recreation Department. Some of you know me because you've seen me in many city council meetings during the last two and a half years. Today, I'm the manager of Corporate and Community Relations for a nonprofit, Bramon University. I represent the School of Business and the School of Education, where I have the privilege of helping those entering the teaching profession. In this role, I work closely with the County of Riverside, the County Workforce Development Board, various economic development teams, and more than a dozen unified school districts across four counties. Those that know me value my ability to fact-find, do deep research, and be an independent, yes, yet critical thinker. I love our city of Marietta, and I'm proud of our city's accomplishments during the last 27 years. Tonight, you'll learn about my vision, platform, and why you, the citizens of Marietta, should elect me as your city councilwoman, District Two. I'm Christie White, and I humbly ask for your vote.
And Mr. Konishek.
Hello, I'm Warren Konishek, and I'm running as a writing candidate for District Five. I'm in the real estate business, and I'm hoping to apply my business experience to the city. I have a degree in Social and Behavioral Sciences from Palmar College. I was born in San Diego. I've been in California my whole life, and I'm hoping to represent you guys.
All right. We'll start with some easy questions here. If the city's forecasting a budget chart fall if Measure T is not approved this fall, if that happens, the council will be faced with some tough decisions on how to balance the budget. What would you suggest as a way to address this, and which, if any, city departments would be first to see these specs? We'll start with the starting room.
That was an easy one. I'll remember that, Chief. Anybody that knows me knows that I'm philosophically against taxes. Measure T is an important thing that is needed by our city. A lot of people have asked me over the last month, "Why did you vote for that?" It was a fight, though, and the council was conscientious to why we're doing what we're doing. I don't think there's a member on the council that wants to impose taxes on anyone. The state of California has you unilaterally taking so much of our money, our redevelopment money, and other things. 30 seconds? Wow. That's a hard question to answer in 30 seconds. We need this money. There's a multitude of other things that we're looking at and exploring. It's not going to be the savior, but it's going to help us move things forward. So, we don't need to cut resources that are imperative to our community, that our community needs. It's important that we work together and we figure out how to make this happen, and that we generate income that stays in our own city.
Mr. Ramos.
Okay, so trying to directly answer the question. I think first, in my first run as an elected official with the city of Marietta, it's important to highlight that during that time period, we did not use our budget for emergency contingency funds, and we actually had about $15 million less in revenue as we do now. That process definitely opened my eyes and taught me on how to prioritize. The number-one priority for the city is public safety. So, we have to make sure that the police and fire are fully funded, code enforcement is fully funded, and then we have to make the tough decisions from that point on.
I'm going to kind of echo some of Mayor Ingram's comments. I think that Measure T is critical for our community, and I know that any tax is felt by our community. However, these are funds that will be raised locally and stay locally. Because in order for it to... I am also in favor of public safety, also in favor of the fire department, making sure that they are fully funded. And without Measure T, we are going to be in a bad spot, where we're going to have to make critical and very hard and painful choices on what we want our city to be. I don't want our city to be a second-class city. I want to provide all of the services that we've been providing. Having police, having a fire, having a library, and having a Parks and Rec. And I think that Measure T is a critical thing that we need to pass. Thank you.
Is property tax hopefully enough? Out of $1 in property taxes, the city of Marietta receives 6 cents for city services, 7 cents for Marietta Fire and Rescue, and 1 and 1/2 cent for the library. There is going to be a deficit of over $2 million projected in the 2017-2018 fiscal year, and $3.669 million in the 2008-2019 fiscal year. So, in order to maintain our quality of life and protect our citizens, have good response time, keep our cities safe, we must pass this sales tax measure. Thank you.
Normally, it gets taxes, but we really need Measure T, because it'll provide the safety we need for our community. We need faster response times. I want Marietta to be the safest city in our nation. I believe this extra funding will do that.
I think we should add about two minutes on that. Okay, not much on it. Yeah, the word, we can size for size. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Ramos. Marietta is currently exploring options to annex additional land currently in the city's sphere of influence. Under what circumstances would you support additional annexations? Must it bring residences, be commercially viable, and what if it requires additional police and fire resources, that sort of thing?
Audio bug. It is an economic gain in determining which areas, the ones that are ready in our sphere of influence, to grab them. I think that it really comes down to the economy. What type of businesses are able to be built in that area that can sustain the services that are going to be needed for that area? However, land is not growing on trees. We are kind of landlocked, and any opportunity to grab land, I think it's vital that we definitely consider doing it if we want it to keep on growing and be able to develop. I will say, I'd like to go back to the other questions. I guess I'm the only one here who's not in favor of Measure T. If you look at the projection of income, the real issue with Marietta is not a funding issue. It is a priority and spending issue. So, a lot of times, maybe I could revisit that in my opinion, because I am not in favor of Measure T.
I think with annexation, I think we really need to be looking at the areas that we're going to be bringing into the fold with our city. And if the services, if the increase in services that we're going to need to pay for is going to be paid for by the area that we're going to annex. And I think that while it's not an immediate thing that's going to happen, I think that once the French Valley area or the area near Briggs actually does develop the commercial businesses there, I think there will be those that was planned there. And once they start adding to the city coffers, I think that annexation would really be a good idea.
In being a city commissioner for the last two and a half years, I have not had the subject of annexation come up before. I did a lot of preparation and a lot of reading, advanced preparation, but I'm not familiar with adding that question, so I will, when elected, look to city staff and for their research to be able to answer that correctly. I will use a few seconds to say that I think that the Marietta City Council seated now did the right thing in deciding to unanimously put the sales tax measure to the citizens of Marietta. It isn't the city council's decision necessarily. It's the city of Marietta's citizens that are voting. So, please, pass your vote, and that way, the city will be able to react to your wishes.
Marietta could really benefit from annexation. It would allow us to build more businesses, which would improve our economy, and the extra revenue we're making would pay for all the services that we need.
So quickly, there are councils. Prior to the council, I'm assuming, looked at annexation of the French Valley, and that's something that we may be able to do in the future. But it would have to be revenue positive for the city before we would take on that endeavor. In regard to the financial position of the city council, the city council had the foresight to actually put money aside that we would consume. We are not deficit spending, and there is money that's there. What we're trying to do is be proactive and make sure that we have that money in the future to provide the services that are needed for the citizens of this city. You're seven times more likely to survive a heart attack in Marietta than anywhere in Southern California. And there's a reason, because of our response times. So, the council is trying to act responsibly. None of us want tax, but there's a necessity here. We need this a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Knight. The city is apparently citing homeowners... This is a question for Kelly. The city's citing homeowners for parking their RVs on their property, even if there's ample room and the property's been used for RV parking for years. Would that be an accurate description of what code enforcement is doing today? Do you know what the policy is on that, and do you support that?
I think this is a difficult issue, and in canvassing the neighborhoods for the election, I've heard about this, and it's a very complicated issue. Because there are property law issues with the houses being sold to people as RV parking. And then there's also the people relying on the fact that the city has not been enforcing this for five to 10 years. And also, there's... Because of the issues that are coming up, because of the code enforcement not being consistent, the city needs to work with homeowners and trying to find a solution to this problem. Be it helping the homeowners with the permits for these... With permits for the damperings for RVs to be brought up, or assisting and trying, or educating the community about the issues of having RV parking that goes on to the sidewalk and forbidden NDA problems.
Thank you for that question. I know it's really important to a lot of the fire residents here. I think that code enforcement is reactive. It doesn't go out and seek to find violators, but code enforcement responds to calls. Having said that, I have spoken with our city manager, Kim Summers, several times regarding the citizens' concerns and issues, and understand that there's a meeting with about five representatives of the group that's concerned and has been exercising their collective citizen rights, so that meeting's coming up. There definitely needs to be improvement in some of the ways that code enforcement is handling things, better communication, collaboration. No citations have been given, only warning letters to start the discussion, and the treatment, I'm sure, for the city is going to be fair and reasonable whenever all the parties get together.
I'm being in favor of this. I think the city needs to work with homeowners to find the solutions to this problem. There needs to be improvement made to the code, but I think we would figure it out.
It's... Christie, you actually did a... Christie White did a great job on that. You articulated that well. I'm impressed. Very complicated situation. It is complaint-driven. Property rights are purchased when you purchase your property in your zone for specific things. But your neighbors will also have the right to quiet enjoyment. And if you wake up and the Berlin Mall is built in your backyard, you may be a little shocked. But that's caveat emptor, right? Buyer beware of what somebody can have or not have on their property. And realtors and people that sell property, with all due respect, Mr. Wonderlick, don't give those entitled, the city sets those boxes. Just a second. So, it doesn't work that way? So, again, we are working on it. I know Councilmember Lane and Councilmember Long are very interested in this, and so is the city, or trying to find equitable solutions to a very difficult problem.
This is a complicated issue, and it is not necessarily driven by the city code actually stating law in reference to RVs. Talking about realtors is appropriate here. I think that when you're purchasing property, we rely on a lot of information that's given to the realtors, and I think it's important that you're given all the information upfront. All because there's a driveway or a space for it doesn't mean it's actually allowed in that area. There has been fines since I was on the city council. But this is complicated. I think the city council has to give decisive actions and not keep on putting it off and directly address this issue, because missignals are going out in the different areas of the city. I completely agree with comments that were made previously. I am glad that the voters who have the right to vote on any issue, and I think that we all have to agree that we have to follow the will of the people, such as Measure E that passed for 67% of the citizens we vote that we have not implemented. We can't pick the choose.
Thank you all. Next question. In other forums, we'll start this with Ms. White. In other forums I've been to in the past cycles in other cities, there's always a discussion about public safety and the pros and cons of contracting services from others. In retrospect, do you feel the city's decision to keep those services in-house was the right decision? And part two, would you support our services being contracted by other municipalities?
I absolutely would not be in favor of our police and fire services being contracted out. One of the great things that keeps Marietta safe and our quality of life so high is that we have our own police and fire representing us. 70% of our firefighters live in the city of Marietta. They have skin in the game. They want your kids, they want your families, and our environment to be safe. That means short response times, because we control a lot of the factors that contribute. Other people live in outlying areas, and their response times, they told me, are markedly longer than ours. So, it is imperative to just our makeup to have our own police and fire and to wonderful attraction here in Marietta, and I support it wholeheartedly.
I think it is the right decision. I think the services should be contracted out. As long as the job gets done, I don't think it matters if it's contracted or not.
I have to take a deep breath on that one. No, I love our fire and police departments, and you owe me a dollar for this skin-in-the-game comment, because I trademarked that for this. I love our police and fire departments. They are the bomb. They're there for all of us. Our response times are amazing. Do I think that we could share dispatch and help with other cities if they would need that in the future? Yes, if we felt that we could accommodate that. But absolutely not. I will never, ever vote to get rid of our department or to be a contract city. Just won't happen.
When I first came to the city, I often joke of Richie's Diner. I was actually on the way to go to Menifee and stopped off at Marietta Hot Springs, and Richie's Diner reminded me of an old-school-type diner. So, this is a new place. And I purchased a house while I was still on active duty, but the firemen had pancakes. They made pancakes for the community. And being from New York City, I'd never seen that type of community engagement. It felt like a small community, it felt like family. It felt like family. So, 100%, I think for the character and the feel for the city, we need to keep our PD and fire. It does not make sense to form a JPA. We cannot support it. It would change the dynamics. Not only would it change the dynamics, it would be just a totally different entity. We would lose control ultimately, and there's nothing that we would get in return. A lot of the cities would not be able to afford, just like they cannot afford the sheriff's department services. So, we will be fronting the bigger end of that bill.
From my experience, I have a unique experience on judging law enforcement, I guess. Is that the Marietta Police Department does an excellent job, and the Sheriff's Department, I would hope that they would be at higher standards. And so, I would not be in favor of contracting with the sheriffs. I think that the Marietta PD is really a unique, and the fire department are provide unique services and excellent services to our community. Also, in regards to contracting out to other cities or other areas, I think that, I mean, we would have to weigh the benefits of that. If we had a fully-funded police force that wasn't already stretched as it is now, then it could be a very realistic decision. However, we aren't at that bridge to cross yet. So, I am in favor of not doing it at this present moment, but if we do get fiscally healthy, then we've got... Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Konishek. The question is, why does Marietta have a district team system?
I think it's to better represent every part of Marietta, and so I think it makes it more, each district more accountable. And I'm in favor of splitting up into five districts.
Well, anybody in this room knows how I feel about districts. They stink. You disenfranchised our city. You disenfranchised our city. You're voting for one person every four years now. We're a city of 116,000. If we were, if we were 200,000, I would say, let's consider that. That's not the case. You disenfranchised the voters in the city of Marietta without exception. And Kevin Shankman and the rest of them are parasites that get in there and threaten our city that took money from us for doing nothing. I think it is disgusting. We are not a polarized city. You go into Gray Ranch, which I'm president of, we're the UN. And we don't define each other by color. We're next-door neighbors. This is Marietta. That's why we moved out of LA. That's why we moved out to come here, to be in a great community. And that's what we are. And for somebody like him to label us and extort from us, that should make all of us angry.
I agree with Jonathan's statement completely. When I was on the city council, I did not support districting. I did not vote, even consider districting. I think this is one of the bigger mistakes for our city. The idea that districting actually allows for more diversity and that it helps minority groups is actually disingenuous and not true whatsoever. If you take the district of, let's say, 500,000 people and you have 100,000 minorities in one district, ultimately, that 100,000 minorities now only have one vote. There is no incentive for the other districts to even go into those communities. So thus, you will always remain a minority on the city council. It makes absolutely no sense. We do not have a minority district in Marietta with that first. We're too small and small. It makes absolutely no sense to have districting in our community and I do not support it. However, both for me, District Two, I'll do my best.
I respectfully disagree. The founding fathers, actually, when they were writing the Constitution, proposed that there would be a congressman for every 30,000 people. Every 30,000 people, we would have a congressman that would represent them. If it was good enough for the founding fathers, then that's the concern that I have. And for the people that, I've been walking our district for District, for District Two, that we've, I've heard the nickname of the East of the 215ers. And there can be a perception, and be it wrong or not, because I know that Mayor Ingram is very open to speaking with any citizen. There could be the perception for neighborhoods to be a stepchild. And so if we're in districts, bring, and that's why I'm running. Truly is why I'm running is to provide a voice for District Two. Because I want to be a voice so there, we don't feel like we are stepchildren. Thank you.
My fellow candidates, Ingram and... Hi. Hi, sorry. I was going to call you by your person. Sorry. Josh. And Mr. Ingram made some very good points that I can compare with. I disagree with the other candidate's statements. I think looking forward, as much as I think there's a problem with having districts, there is also some opportunities that it brings to the Marietta City Council. When elected, the five council people, including myself, both of you, will be able to set a path of how we want to have the districts work in our favor. We don't have to make it franchise. It can be an opportunity for us to have a deeper and richer conversation with citizens in those areas. And we can, we can take a bad situation and make it better. It's up for us to design how we want that to work. And the citizens' input will really be valuable in shaping how the outcome of our district situation will be in the years to come.
Thank you. Next question, back to Mr. Ingram to start. Sometimes there will be conflicts between what a city can do and what they should do. Case in point is Proposition 10 on our ballot right alongside all of you in November. Proposition 10 would repeal the Costa-Hawkins Act of 1995 and allow municipalities to establish rent control within their city. Do you think cities should have the right to set rents on private property within their cities? Or do you think this would have, do you think this would have a positive or negative impact on construction, especially multifamily construction, Mr. Ingram?
Absolutely not. You didn't, the city has no right to impose what they want on a private property owner in respect to what they charge rent control. Cause nothing but problems in Southern California from Los Angeles all the way to this region. And if you do that, you're going to change the dynamic of how people own property, rent property. And you're going to see a housing shortage where you're going to discourage development, not encourage it. It's, it's, it's a poorly planned, ill-conceived concept that is a means in which they can chip away at Proposition 13 and other things down the road by going, property is not affordable anymore. So I would be very cautious about that. No, I would not support it.
It actually increases the amount of, give the city the authority to go beyond the state, in many cases mandated requirements within a community. They already give cities a lot of incentives, developers a lot of incentives to build affordable housing, rent-controlled housing. I am not in favor of it. I think what would happen is a lot of cities, I think, every city will be impacted differently depending on the makeup of the community. But then you won't have no consistency as you have turnover with the city councils. In certain cities like LA or San Francisco, you'll see it heavily implemented in one area and you will actually start forming ghettos likely as you run out of areas to spread it across the city. So in a way, it will kind of promote, in my estimation, some form of redlining in a lot of cases because where are you going to put all the extra affordable housing at? And ultimately, you want to put them in one corner of the city, which is, it's a lot of problems, frankly.
I don't really see rent control as being an issue in Southwest Riverside County. I think that the market should really dictate the rates for rent. And I think that if people, if the homeowner, the owners actually raise the rent to levels that are, that are too high, people will look elsewhere. I'm not in favor of rent control. I don't think that our area needs it. But other cities are completely different and, but those are different situations. And we should be focusing on Marietta. Thank you.
I would just like to say that in preparation for this, I was told there would be no ballot measures discussed on tonight's questioning. So. Someone who I relied on for good information. Having said that, I am against rent control. I'm for the free market system. And I think that it discourages necessary housing development. And I agree with some of the comments others have made, so I will repeat them.
I am against rent control. Rent control causes nothing but problems. We should discourage, it would discourage development, not encourage it. The open market should dictate the rent, not the government. No, I would not support it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Ramos. We talked a bit ago about your thoughts on the districting system. As we sit here tonight, can you think of any priorities in your district that may have gone unaddressed or that you feel aren't significant at this time that may take precedence over something else in a different district?
Well, there's a, when I first started to run before the 215 exchange went into place, that was my, sort of my bucket list and actually wanted Marietta, even though it wasn't required by law, to help build that community, that area up for traffic flow. For me, my biggest concern doesn't actually relate as the city council, as it does to our parents. I think it is a shame that you have Marietta children, parents who chose Marietta to purchase houses, was led to believe, at least in my case, that you would want to Marietta School District. And instead, a big chunk of my constituents would have to go to Menifee or Parrish School District. I think that is shameful, paying the higher level taxes. And my kids will not have opportunity to go to the number one in the county in the top, in the top 10 in the state.
I do agree with Mr. Ramos in regards to the schools. I think it's, it's interesting that the north of the Clint Keith line is in Menifee schools. However, I've been very happy with the Menifee schools. I do support Measure W, which is going to build the new high school at Leon and Scott. Beyond that, I think that the one thing that is impacting District Two the most right now is the, is the missing piece of the Clint Keith extension. The Clint Keith extension is great, don't get me wrong. It's a beautiful road. However, the getting to it is very confusing at the current time. And it can cause traffic delays on Winchester going north where people can be lined up for close to a mile. So we need to address that soon in the morning. Thank you.
Issues in District Two that I have thought about are homelessness, being able to be responsive to all communities within the district, being fair, transparent and accountable, maintaining excellent call times for police and fire in all the outlining areas of the city with our five fire stations especially, traffic issues, and lastly, illegal trash dumping in certain outlining areas.
I agree with Mr. Ramos. I support Measure W. And I think the Clint Keith extension is great. I really do, but I think it makes it harder to get to.
All right, so we'll try and, I'll try and make this as brief as I can. The four years that I served on this council, I could honestly tell you that there's not a council member where you picked up a phone, whether it's been Mr. Long, whether it's been Mr. Lane, Mr. Ciardo, where we wouldn't respond to any corner of this community. That is the problem with districts. I'm sitting here listening to potential candidates that are going, I'm here to fight for my district. But I'm telling you, we fight for our city. That is the objective. So whether it's a district or not, if I call Mr. Ciardo, I know he'll be there for me. I know Mr. Lane would be. I know Mr. Long would be. And I would do the same for them. And that should be the mindset because we are one city. That is the problem of east, west, north and south. When I campaigned, I had to hit every voter in this city. Now we've taken that and created it to less than 20%. It was not a good idea. And by the way, when the founding fathers had 30,000 to represent the country, it was far smaller than it is today.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Knight. Back in the early days of cityhood, people used to run for the council with a few street signs, usually painted by their kids, maybe a little schmoozing down at Terry's Coffee Trader. Do you think the price is getting too high to run a successful campaign and that many of our residents will not be able to cross that threshold?
And that's why I am supportive of districts. If I, I wouldn't be in this election if it wasn't district. Because just to put your name on the ballot, a thousand, just to put the informational sheet is a thousand dollars. My family doesn't have that. And I'm running a shoestring budget. And I know, I mean, my, my wife and my family were from the mid, or my, I was raised in northern San Diego, but my whole family's from the Midwest. And there are people that, you know, you're in a small town and they, they select the mayor at a bar usually. And so it's, but, I mean, that's the thing is if I, I want to be as available to the citizens of Marietta as that. And Mr. Ingram is that. However, it is difficult because when we're in a city of 115,000 people, it, it can seem daunting and the approachability of the council members. And they've all been very open to me. But I want to make sure that just, just in walking from, from door to door, that they understand that all of us are available to them. Thank you.
Regarding the question of whether the price is getting too high to run a campaign, I have two thoughts. I think whether it's a district race or it's a citywide race, costs for running a campaign are very high. So I think generally speaking, yes, it de-selects quite a lot of individuals who otherwise might be able to run and do a good job representing their city. I don't know the answer to that. That would take a major overhaul in order to even change it, even in the districts. So it is. Having said that, I want to say that I feel I've been very fortunate in having supporters give me small contributions and otherwise to be able to run a campaign because they believe in me in District Two and for the city of Marietta. So while it is expensive, I think there is a way to get your message out and to work with the citizens to get support and make the grassroots campaign that I'm running work so that I will be elected. Thank you.
I don't think so, but I'm really glad that we have districts because it makes it more affordable for everybody because we have a lot of those people to reach. And I think you don't really need a lot of money to run a successful campaign if you go door to door, you know, run the grassroots campaigns. So I don't think it's a problem.
Getting down here this time, thank you. The campaigns are expensive. They're ridiculous. They're expensive. I spent over $70,000 in my first campaign. I still haven't recovered that money. And if you look at districts, and that, by the way, was spending a dollar per constituent, voting constituent in the city at the time. Today with districts, if you have 21, 21,000 in your district, you're going to spend a minimum of $2 per individual just to do simple mail pieces and slates to get your information out there. I knocked on 200, or I knocked on 20,000 doors, I mean, 250,000 phone calls the first time I was elected. I did not give up. It's a lot of work and it's an honor, so it's well worth working for.
Kind of goes back to the whole budgeting thing. My first election when it was at large, it's not less than $500 in my campaign. It's all a matter of the effort and the volunteers and the people that you connect to. 115,000 is a very small community. Again, from a different perspective, I'm from New York City. So there's probably about this many on my block when I grew up. But, but you have to highlight that there is an advantage as far as cost-effectiveness with districting. I think it's absurd that you have to spend $1,000 to put your name and your ballot designation on the ballot. That, that, and I don't think it's $1,000, I don't remember, but it's, it's up there. I think it was like $400 or something, but you really don't. I, I think the cons outweigh the negatives, but the pluses for districting. However, there are a lot of advantages and I am eagerly looking forward to representing District Two.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Duffin. We'll start with, back to Ms. White.
As long as it's not a ballot-related question.
Proposition Five.
We set that up and you went right for the, very quickly.
Sorry. Sometimes if you don't get a cheap shot, you get no shot at all. The city's participating with four neighboring cities in an effort to brand our region, to establish an identity separate from the Inland Empire. Number one, do you support this effort? And if you could come up with a catchy slogan for the region, what would that be? And just reminder, if it's good enough, you could probably save the city a few thousand bucks in the, for covering the study. So do you agree that we need to establish a separate identity and what would that be?
I have no slogan suggestion, so I would like a ballot question, please. I, I think that it's a good idea to take the regional approach and here's why. It's a global economy. The tourism in the valley is $700 million. We need, as Marietta, to tap into that regionally. So branding jointly with various other sister cities is a good idea. Marietta is also interested in getting our name on the map so that people know who we are and don't refer to us by the city that's next door to Pachanga. So I, I support it. I don't have a slogan. I know that Marietta is working with a local Marietta marketing agency and getting everyone's input to the outcome and a wonderful slogan will, will be had.
I support it. I think Marietta needs its own identity, you know, the side theme right next to Tobacco Lot. I think we need to get our name on the map. I don't have a slogan right now, but I'll come up with one.
Ready? My slogan is, we're not the Inland Empire. It's very simple. We need to brand ourselves as Riverside County. It's all overdue. It's actually kind of unfair because this is a softball to me because I said I'm a committee. And I absolutely want to see rebranding. I think it's very, very important for us because, Mr. Wunderlich, we'll take the time to explain the difference between a Jaubel conventional loan in Orange County versus Riverside County and why our property values are far less because of how we're branded. So we need to change that and it's something that we all need to look at. branded. So we need to change that, and it's something that we all need to look at. Starting with going, or not the Inland Empire would be a good.
It's cheaper to shop in Marietta. That would be my slogan. It is, your regionalism is wonderful, absolutely. If you can combine resources and increase your buying power, I am in full support of it. However, I'm running for Marietta City Councilman. I want Marietta to be number one. I want the individuals who are going to Wine Country to stay in our hotels because it's cheaper to stay in our hotels. I want them to forget their socks, to shop at our Walmart because it's cheaper to buy here. If you live in Menifee and you want to buy a refrigerator, come buy it in Marietta because it's cheaper to buy in Marietta. We can capture, we don't have many destinations, but we can capture the labor and tourism by having attractive lodging facilities, eateries, and again, it's cheaper to buy in Marietta. So that would be my slogan, off the top of my head.
I am in favor of the branding efforts to be, to attract people to our area and to our city. I, I think it's important. I, I also think that having a separate identity from Temecula and, and the area would be helpful. I think we need to attract the businesses and make, make sure that people surrounding and within California understand that, that we live this high quality of life and this is a great place to live. And I think that if, if we can promote that, then we would bring in more business and more people. Thank you.
Okay.
Proposition question?
Yeah. Tell me that in a minute. There are several propositions, like 10 or 11 propositions, so you get off it all. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Conshack. Temecula, that's kind of a follow-up to the last question we had on branding, but Temecula's kind of got an monopoly right now on the tourist trade with Pachanga, the Wine Country, some signature events. Lake Elsor's done a good job with its green streams, sports capital world, attracting major events. What do you see as Marietta's claim to fame, a signature event, or a reason for people to visit and stick around to spend a few bucks with our merchants?
I think they'll want to shop at Marietta because we're so cheap, we're, and we're smaller than Temecula. And, you know, we're, you know, we're less known than Temecula, which I think is more interesting and, you know, to get a place that nobody really knows about compared to Temecula.
We've said that time with Patrick. Get Shamrock would be a good start. I think that what we need to do is take a look at the fact that we are bigger than Temecula. The last time I checked, you cannot get to San Diego, you can't get to Wine Country without driving through Marietta, correct me if I'm wrong. We have 277,000 cars a day that pass the Golden Triangle. We are the place to be. We are in the sweet spot. Clinton Keith will eventually happen. Remember, that's difficult because it's private property and you can't just usurp what you want on private property owners. There's a consequence. So I think that we are distinct, but remember this, we're all getting to a point where we're plateauing out on our ability to grow in Menifee, Baltimore, and the rest will be our jobs' foregoers over the next decade. So we need to worry about each other. It is a region. It is not just Marietta or Temecula anymore. It cannot be.
So I, I do agree with a lot of the comments here. I do want to stress, again, I'm not against regionalism. I actually voted when I was in office to create that exploratory and the group, the private group in conjunction with Marietta Chamber to, to look for catchphrases. I'm not against us working together. However, at the end of the day, we need to stop looking with envious eyes at our southern neighbors or our northern neighbors, and we have to be our own self. We have to look within. We have our own character, our own personality that I think is a plus. People do want to live in this community. It's one of the safest in the nation. The schools, for those who can go to Marietta schools, they're wonderful. I think we have to look within and find our own voice, our own identity, and absolutely when as possible, we can work with the neighboring cities.
I'll share as well. You just told me. I'll send it back. I'll send it back. Don't worry about it. I think that we, Marietta needs to focus on, I think that the efforts actually bringing in the hotels is a good idea because people, Temecula and the Wine Country, they don't have hotels nearby. And I think that that would, once the, the people actually are staying in Marietta, if we have, if we put in restaurants like Anthony, or more restaurants like Anthony's, or, or nice restaurants near the hotels, then the people will, will traffic them. And then also, I think Get Shamrock is a good idea as well. I agree with Mr. Ingram. And, but I think that we should be also focusing on the region because we do, another thing that I agree with Mr. Ingram is that, is that there is a large amount of traffic going through Marietta. And if we can show to the people going through Marietta to get to Wine Country that this is, you should stop here and use our businesses, then that would certainly help our city and, and the residents.
In Marietta, we have the nationally-known bicycle tour. We have now our second year in Town Square Park, the Susan Coleman Run. And we also have the famous Get Shamrock event. I think that Marietta now has the hotels to support people coming to our community in town for signature events. We're also looking for more things to come in. I personally know someone who was a semifinalist at the Innovation Center's Shark Tank Contest, who has an adventure park that is being discussed on certain ways that we can facilitate that being brought to the city to drive more traffic and adventure and fun things for people to come here to Marietta to participate and do, as well as families to participate. So I think that we are on the right track and can only, with our economic development department and team and resources, do better and better in that area.
Next question for Mr. Ingram. No, we'll start with Mr. Ingram? Oh, yeah. Number's getting confused up here. If you had a colleague on the council that you felt was out of bounds ethically or acting in a manner that would reflect badly on the city, how would you handle a situation?
We have a code of conduct that, that's applied to council members, and I believe that we all should be held to a higher standard. Having said that, I would assume that my, my colleague would pull me aside and have a conversation with me and say, "This is what I heard," or "This is what I observed," and that I could make that correction. Because again, it's, it's an honor to serve on the city council, and we represent everyone in the city, and therefore we should be held accountable for what we do and say.
Does the question ask if, how to respond if they had pulled me aside, or how I would pull them aside?
No, how, how would you respond if you had, what colleague you felt was acting out?
Well, I, I think I just, just did what Mayor Ingram said. I think the first thing, you can't assume, I think that you have to, you owe them, you expect the courtesy. You need to pull them aside, talk to them, and take it from, take it from there. It's such a generic question. It really depends on, on what it is. If it's a legal issue, then you should go to the legal redress routes, either DA or policing if it's a criminal issue. But if it's just a matter of what you feel is morally or ethically challenging, you definitely should pull them aside. And I try to embarrass them and turn the pulpit into a political weapon is what we generally see today. Is when you disagree with somebody philosophically, you try to attack them and try to make it personal. They should use the pulpit instead of for the people, but for the political reindeer games.
In my employment, we come, we do have ethical issues come up, and, and we have a different ethical duties in, in the law. However, the code of conduct, I would certainly bring it up to the colleague and point out that both the, the ethical conduct that I think is most questionable, and also it, but we're kind of limited with the Brown Act and having a full-on intervention from all of the council confronting the individual. But I think that we at least owe them the, the courtesy of saying, "This is a problem" before actually taking further actions. Beyond that, I, I think that the, as council members, we are held to a higher, a higher duty, a higher ethical standard, and we need to live up to that standard, both in how we treat each other and how we, and how we respond to these issues.
My rule of thumb that's worked for me in professional or personal settings is to always address my concerns directly with the individual involved, before going preferably to other people and discussing a situation. I think that we are called to a higher standard, and the code of ethics, integrity, transparency, accountability are all come into play with a colleague who would be out of bounds. I pledge to uphold the code of ethics and conduct, and you can count on me to do that. And one of the things personally that made me decide to run for city council and invest my time to be a servant of the citizens of Marietta is that I felt a personal calling to be my highest self, to bring my best level of integrity and my best self and skills to the city if I were elected. So I think that if a colleague were out of bounds, I would talk to them, and I would hope that they would do the same for me.
I'm going to talk to the colleague first in private, try to work it out. And it just really depends on the situation, you know, if it, you know, the person didn't respond after talking to them, then, you know, we have to see what happens after that.
The Alltech Media Group, a full-service video production, advertising, and marketing company. For over three decades, we've been providing successful strategic ideas and media tools to small businesses, manufacturers, and government agencies. The Alltech Media Group is a one-source marketing solution, from videos and print to digital and social media for the manufacturing industry. Compare the difference in our customer service, the difference in our creativity, and the difference in our quality of work. For a free marketing evaluation, contact us today.
Next question for Mr. Ramos. To start, in your opinion, does the city have a strong team in place? And what could you contribute to strengthening that team or revitalizing it if you feel there's some dysfunction?
I absolutely believe that Marietta has a strong team. I think the city manager's strong. I, I think the police and the fire chiefs are strong. I think we have a good staff, a very good staff. I would always like to speed up the process for, for planning departments. That's almost unfair, but I always highlight that the turnaround still takes too long for that area. I, I think, I think ethics is such an important element. First, the city doesn't have a code of ethics. That's a code of conduct. And, but the code of conduct and ethics also applies to city staff. I'm pretty sure everybody in here, for example, it's kind of a cheap shot, but everybody here received the pamphlet on Measure T. That is virtually propaganda and promotion for Measure T from the city. That's a violation of FPPC. Somebody should have said something.
I spoke with other city managers from, from other cities. A good family friend is, is, I think he's an assistant city manager, actually. But he's talked about, he's talked about our city, and he said we have great staff. There's just not that many of them. And so we want to make sure that we keep up to the same standards of having such a good staff, a good team, but bringing in other team members are going to, they're going to be able to provide the same quality of service that we, we are able to provide right now. And so, so I, I've, I've met and spoken with a number of the people that work for the city, and I've been impressed with all of them.
I think Marietta has the best executive leadership team with our city manager and executive leaders that we've had in years. All credit and respect to former city managers and then staff at the leadership level, but I think that we're poised to really do great things. I really have nothing but respect for our city manager. And I also want to point out that our new Development Services Department Director, Jeff Murphy, who's now overseeing the combined amount of departments that were not previously in that area, he's overseeing planning, engineering, economic development, building and safety, public works, maintenance. And I think that was an astute way to reorganize the department. And Jeff has done more in his several months in city staff position and is doing a lot to make business-friendly decisions to bring more economic development into Marietta. And I think we're poised for great success. And that is one of the reasons I'm running.
I think that Marietta has a strong team. We have good staff, great city manager, strong police, fire department. I'm really impressed with everybody in the city of Marietta. I've gotten a chance to know our city manager pretty well, and I think we just need to keep it up.
We have the A-team for administrations. Any team of administrators in the city of Marietta that can get a compliment from gas and clawing has to be doing pretty darn well. And I can tell you, Jim Summers, Ivan Haller, our staff do an amazing job. Yes, we've had some problems with attrition. We've had to cut back over the years. We're down about 60 employees. But we have an amazing team. Looking forward to working with them for another four years. And I think you're going to see a lot of things that are going to transpire in our city. But again, it comes back to, you need money to hire additional people. That's the way it works. So we build, we create, we get that funding in place, and we can expedite projects. We'll earn and keep money in our city.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Knight. If you're elected, what direction would you have for city staff?
In general, I think that they're doing a pretty good job. I think that with, with the passage of Measure T, we would want to be growing healthily and making sure that the human resources are hiring qualified and quality people and not just increasing our numbers because we have the funds. Beyond that, I think with the city staff, I, I do think with the number, we do need more staff. We are understaffed, but beyond that, I think that the direction for the people, I would just be telling them pretty much they could keep doing the good job that they're already doing. Thank you.
With regards to the directions for staff, one of the things that I am interested in is pursuing public-private partnerships, which are called P3s. Many cities across the United States are using public agencies and private organizations as well as municipal resources in the areas of parks, school, transportation, parking lots. And I think that's an avenue that I personally studied quite a bit, and I would like to work with our city manager and possibly staff on implementing that to the benefit of Marietta.
I think our staff is doing a fantastic job, but we need to increase the amount of staff we have and make sure they're highly qualified like the staff members we have right now.
Repeat that question. Mr. Wonderlake, the number three, please.
If you are elected, what direction would you have for city staff?
None. We are not a general law city. We're a managerial form of city. We, as council members, set policy, implement policy, and hand it off to our city manager, which then brings it to the staff. We may be able to talk to department heads and have a conversation, but it's not our place as council members to master the city staff. That's why you have a city manager.
Well, you kind of took my thunder, so I don't know how to add to that. I, I will say- I will say, and comment about the private-public relationships. I know that the specific plan downtown, we have a new process for, to help with parking. I'm in strong favor of instead of getting smaller parking lots, trying to get some type of parking structure. We're using good land that could be for future development for parking spaces. I think a parking structure just makes perfect sense, and with the right type of partnership, it could be at the very least cost neutral, hopefully. As far as public-private relationships with schools, it's not relevant to the city, we do not have any say or control over public schools. With the city manager, I would sit down and discuss what we can do to address the homelessness in this city. Currently, we spend zero dollars for expenses directly.
All right. I do apologize for the moderately tricked question, but yes, you don't give direction to staff, you're absolutely correct there. You have one employee as the city council, and that's the city manager, well, yes, okay. And everything else flows from there, so. Okay, next question, we'll start with Kristy White. Recently, the city has developed multiple skilled nursing facilities throughout the city. These facilities generate more calls to our first responder resources, and the response time availability can become a challenge to the rest of the community. Is there a plan for offset to these service challenges, and how would you address that?
That is an excellent topic and one that needs a lot of exploration. I have two of the five fire stations in District Two, and with more assisted living facilities going in and the call time on average one and a half hours to two hours, our fire and police resources are off on a couple that's lengthy. We need supplemental reserves and finances to be able to put more staff on, to keep our call turn times up, and to be able to still give good service to our senior citizens that are living in assisted living homes and residences. Thank you.
I think we just need more funding to keep the time up, because the more fun we have, more resources we have, the faster we'll be able to take care of everything.
This is insurance companies not wanting to pay their bill. When somebody falls out of bed in a place that generates income, or whatever the company may be, they should be obligated to pick that person up, put them in bed, or pay for the services that they received. There's no such thing as a free lunch in business, we all have to pay for the services that are provided. So to me, it's a pretty simple thing. Our department goes on a service, we need to be compensated for it. If that's a for-profit company, if it's not-for-profit, then maybe we can take a look at that and look at a supplemental to take care of it. Insurance companies have required that the staff call when somebody falls out of bed and call the fire department first, rather than taking the responsibility because they don't wanna get sued. That is, the insurance companies doing the same thing that they do with you and I. You have to spend $10,000 of your money first before your coverage takes in, even though you're spending a thousand dollars a month for insurance.
I think that we have to, looking at the resources that we have, we have to address the fact that we have to demand and negotiate a better contract with the county services by ambulance services. A lot of times, we're kind of getting double-tapped, kind of handing, what we're doing, handing the baton over while we respond in record times to stabilize the patient and it kind of gets handed off and you wind up getting, in a lot of cases, double bill for ambulance services. That's a problem, and we need to improve on the response time from the county services that we are contracted with. They are unacceptable. As far as for assisted living homes, we have to look internally, and it just does not make sense that we have to start up a full fire engine or a ladder to respond. Look for other faster ways to, and that's affordable ways to respond.
I agree with Mayor Ingram, I actually think that if the, if the care facilities are for profit, that they need to pay for our services, if they're going to be, if they're going to be monopolizing the services of the fire department, then we need to work with them to understand that this is something that is taxing our community. And beyond that, I think that with Measure T, this was helped, but this is gonna be a constant problem, so we need to address this sooner rather than later.
Okay, we'll start this with Mr. Konicek. We've had at least two fairly significant wildfires in the region this year, and a couple within the last couple of years, actually, I believe within District Two. Community resources and obviously the city budget is still recovering from the 2008 incident. Do you have any ideas or plans to mitigate these challenges, and is there a funding mechanism to offset these expenses?
I think, you know, we just need to continue funding whenever disasters like this happen, and I feel like Measure T will actually help this, is we're putting more funding towards our fire department here, and I think that's what you need to do.
So I had the privilege of being baptized by fire on our first day as mayor, and watching our fire department work together was the most amazing thing I'd ever seen. Our city was coordinated, we were quick, and we contained that fire and only lost one structure. I hope to minimize losing one structure, but it could have been multiple structures. As the regional conservation authority chairman, we're working now on wildfire programs and policies with Mayor Ron, Mayor Benoit, and others throughout the region, which we're working on now to look for additional funding. Our fire district does a phenomenal job on a daily basis, and just so you know, we don't have a sort of authority over the contracts with the ambulance services that are provided because we are a fire district. And if you wanna get a little clarity on that, you might wanna talk to the fire department before they leave, because they're here.
So, there's a lot of contributing factors to the wildfires. I can start with, for many who don't know, Prop 57 is no longer a fine felony to start a wildfire, even if there is bodily or actual mortality caused by it. That's one. A lot of the conservation processes that leaves the overgrowth and pretty much the fuel for the fire, that needs to get addressed. I think the question was about funding, am I correct? So, and a lot of these questions about business and stuff, really the answer is the free market. Our job is to try to make the process as easy and straightforward for businesses to come to our city and more importantly, stay in our city. So that way, our tax revenue and our development fees and all the revenue generated by the cities can then decrease and use that to pay for the services.
I think this kind of comes back to Measure T partly, but I think that there's, with wildfires, my family's from North County, San Diego, and we've evacuated a number of times in our house. And it really, with fire, especially with brush fire, it's important to have weed abatement, it's important to have a buffer between the wildlands and the homes, and we need to enforce that because it really does make a difference if there is a setback from the chabarette and house. And I know that weed abatement is not a really sexy topic, but this is something that is, it is important to get fires under control before they burn down residences. And beyond that, I think that San Diego has also gone to using roaming engines for areas that are subject to wildfires, where we can have a response time getting on top of the fire, especially in those dangerous times like San Angeles.
That was a good answer. I do not have a plan yet, but I am very proud and humbled to be endorsed by the Murrieta Firefighters Association, and I will work closely with them and gather their input on having a comprehensive plan and strategy when I'm elected to District Two and for the city of Murrieta.
Next question from Mr. Ingram. We hear a lot these days about VRBOs, short-term rental properties, the advantages and disadvantages that they bring to a city. What does Murrieta currently do with VRBOs, and what in your opinion should be done going forward?
The academics for RBOs.
Vacation rental by order, short-term rental properties?
At this point, I don't know of any policy that we have really regarding them. Personally, I think when you're looking at vacation rentals and short-term rentals, that if somebody has a property they can rent and they're not disturbing their neighbors, a condo, something that would be located maybe on the plateau or in an area that they should be able to. But I think at some point, you have to look at whether it's licensed and whether we're gonna be able to regulate it and enforce it. That's a different mechanism. It's like talking about wildfires, it's very difficult to regulate something that's sporadic, and it doesn't have to be a person, it could be a lightning strike, right? So we have to start figuring out these policies when we go along, and this is a new thing over the last five years for ours, and see a lot of it in the beginning, but you're seeing more of it now.
This is a hot-blooded issue because, quite frankly, the state is trying to figure out ways to increase their revenue tax stream. They wanna have, if you look at it, it is a direct competition to the hotel industry. If you look at your hotels, you have the certain taxes that greatly benefit the city in the amount, percentage that they get back from it. So you have these short rental vacation properties that kind of takes away from that income. Personally, as a property owner, if you're not violating the law, your tenants are not violating, disturbing the neighbors, I see nothing wrong with it. Same to Uber, they're trying to regulate Uber, it falls in the same line of how are we gonna regulate and make money, extra money on property owners?
This is not something, when going from door to door and talking to people in the district, I haven't actually heard this as being a major issue. I think that as long as the people are able to rent it without disturbing their neighbors, I think that that should be fine. However, once there actually are abuses, then we need to start regulating it, and the city has to step in. I also, you know, I do agree that this impacts our hotels, however, I don't really see this as that big of a market in our area.
With regards to RBO and short-term rentals, I have two thoughts. Generally, I'm for less regulations, and I'm for all types of economic development, including small home-based businesses. I think that the bigger the government, the smaller the citizen, so I'm definitely for less regulation. However, I think that my second point would be that I'm for business licenses, and that the RBO, short-term rental families or property owners would also be a member of our Murrieta Wildamar Chamber of Commerce, and that that will round out the situation very well.
It's a direct competition to the hotel industry. I think the less regulation, the better, you know. Government's the problem, not the solution, and so I think there should be any regulations to that.
All right, next question, starting with Mr. Ramos. California is referred to as the recovery Riviera. We have a proliferation of transition homes, halfway houses, recovery houses, and so forth, which can crop up inside a neighborhood. So again, I'm wondering what sort of regulation does Murrieta have, what options do you have, and how should these be controlled?
This really should be more than a minute question. So this is totally opposite of what we discussed earlier. First, Murrieta has virtually no say in this industry, this is state-regulated. We have, I wanna say, absolutely no control over it. The only enforcement tool that we can have possibly would be code enforcement. There are limits to how many living souls can be inside of an apartment, but then again, you have to try to catch up, if you will. It can cause a disruption. If they're managed properly, let me back up. We, as a Christian, I think you have to be compassionate. Many of these people are doing this willingly and wanna recover from it. If they have the nurse on site and their requirements, which are kind of lax in the state, it can be done properly. Would I want necessarily to live across the street, my whole Christian statement out the window, if I have five young kids and I would be concerned about it? But the ones who give a bad name is the ones that are not managed properly.
We really need to manage the negative impacts of these homes, if there are any negative impacts, and I understand that there is a need for these facilities, I mean, I certainly wouldn't want one near me, however, but so long as they are respectful and actually following the rules, not impacting, not violating any of our municipal codes, not violating any laws, then I guess we have to deal with them. However, if there is, if there are negative impacts, we need to regulate them.
Again, as a commissioner for Parks and Immigration, I haven't thought across this topic, nor in my research and due diligence prepared for tonight, I didn't study this. I don't have an opinion on this tonight, but if elected, I will give it a lot of consideration and a lot of research time, so I'm not going to weigh in on that.
As long as the laws are being broken or any codes being violated, I see no problem with it.
This is a human issue. This is not just a regulation issue. This is about children, adults that are addicted to opiates. We have 50,000 people in our country die in the last two years from fentanyl and opiates. I had a 27-year-old nephew that went home, who was addicted to meth, walked in, sat down and had dinner with his fiancee, walked into his garage, put a shotgun in his mouth, and killed himself. We are not taking the time or the effort that we need to help our children, our soldiers and others. We can just, we cannot just abandon them. And I take personal offense when people don't think that we do enough for the homeless in this city. We feed 500 families a week. We're at 2.5 million pounds of food a year. When are we gonna realize that we cannot throw these people on the street and neglect them? They're our mothers, our fathers, our children. We need to work together for a solution, and not go, I don't wanna see it in my backyard.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Knight. Gonna take off on the previous question, but we had an excellent presentation here yesterday between the city of Temecula and the city of Murrieta, code enforcement, Bergey County, discussing the issue of homelessness. Homelessness obviously is on the rise in our region. California was actually the leading state in the country last year for homelessness, approximately 135,000 in 2017. The second state is way behind us, New York, about 46,000. Their homeless population increased about 4.5% this year. California's increased almost 14%. So it's a growing problem and an increasingly expensive problem for all of our states, and I think we've all seen this on the news, and it's a growing problem for our region. What do you propose to do, what do you think we have in place, and what would you like to see down to address the homeless issue?
Well, I think Measure T would certainly help because community policing, if we get more police on the street, and they can also get a handle on the homeless population. They are actually, the homeless population is actually the most under, they don't use social security and don't use Medicare. If we can connect them to these sources of funding, and San Diego uses, I'm sorry, confusing San Diego as an example, but San Diego uses a homeless task force, where they have a mental health representative, they have a probation representative, they have a police representative, and they go around and they talk to the homeless population, and it's a very difficult problem, and I've spoken to officers about this, because they, some homeless people don't want to live in a home. They don't, they choose to live on the street, and that is a difficulty, it's difficult because we can't just move them somewhere else, but we have to convince them that this is not the life that they should be living, and they can get help from many different groups. Thank you.
I think that the solution has to be a regional approach. I think that the solution has to be a regional approach. I don't think individual cities can tackle the immense needs and resources, so I'm for a regional approach and solution. There is a regional meeting on September 27th, if you would like some information about that, many, many diversions coming together. You can't talk about homelessness without talking about our veterans and the resources that they need, and you can't talk about homelessness and veterans without talking about affordable housing. So I think this is a complex situation, and I'm very supportive of the regional approach. Brian Ambrose on City Staff, Assistant City Manager, Brian Ambrose is our representative in Marietta, he will be at the Homeless Coalition Meeting on the 27th, as will I.
Yeah, homelessness is a real problem in California. I think Measure T, if it could be the pass, would really help. We just need to connect the homeless with the resources they need, yeah, try to convince them that they don't want to be homeless, if they actually choose to be homeless, and help the ones that are homeless by choice.
I don't believe anyone is homeless by choice, but we're spending a lot of Measure T funds on earth. The reality is, this cost has been shifted onto society because the state and the Fed has decided to close down facilities with people with mental illness. And when you're homeless and you live on the street, it exacerbates your mental illness, then they self-medicate. I've never seen anyone that said, "Oh, I decided that I want to be homeless." It's because they're put in a situation to where there's no winning. And because you're a drug addict or an alcoholic, generally there's an underlying problem. And until we take mental illness as serious as we do cholesterol, cancer, and heart disease, we're not going to fix this problem. That's when we'll fix it. When we open our minds and our hearts and go, "Okay, this is another human being." Not a statistic that I don't want in my backyard.
One thing I love about Jonathan is his passion. Always admired about him. The truth of the matter is homelessness would not be solved by government, and we have to recognize this. One of the biggest regrets was I voted to form this regional coalition, and I have to tell you, it has epically failed. The reason why I know this, the numbers have increased. It's been in place now for going close to three years, and it has failed. I went on, we were playing some Christian music in Temecula, we rented out a park, we had trucks full of food on a Saturday, and the police department tried to arrest us because we had the audacity as Christians to try to feed the homelessness. And it's because of this regional group that we put into place that they feel that government has the know-how to solve the homelessness problem. We all need to come together as a community, government, faith-based communities, to solve this, it's the only way this is going to work.
Next question, we'll start with Ms. White. Housing is an issue for our state, certainly housing affordability and availability for our region, specifically with housing for the workforce. With median home price in Marietta falling toward $500,000, what can the city do to provide more affordable housing here toward first-time buyers, teachers, veterans, and our own children?
Well, housing prices are a result of the free market system. The affordable housing issue is controlled by the county, so the city of Marietta doesn't really have a direct impact, from what I know so far, with regards to setting prices. I don't have a more formulated answer on that, so that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
The free market, in my opinion, is the solution to our housing problems. I think rent control makes things worse. I just think we need less regulation, let the free market play.
They don't have enough housing, whether it's affordable, whether it's not affordable. Somebody made a comment to me the other day that you issued 4,000 permits last year in the city of Marietta. I think you complimented or complimented on that, Mr. Long, you're like, "No, we didn't, we issued 333 for new homes." Two-thirds of the 4,000 permits that were issued for solar plans, and the remainder for TIs and improvements. So that's an inaccurate erroneous statement. We need to look at time to market. Markets take the path of least resistance. And until we modify CEWA and we figure out how to make it so that developers can come and do things without being tortured in the 18th century medieval sense of the word, you're not going to open the market. And the more you build, the more affordable housing is.
Absolutely agree. Well, the only real role that we have for housing would be the turnaround time for permits, our DIF fees, which I do not support raising them, I think that was a mistake, we should not have raised our DIF fees in the city, that would have encouraged more building in the city. As far as CEWA, you know, a lot of this stuff is out of our hands, but they are held to certain timetables. So when you put in your EIRs or your different requests for information that you have to supply, and those agencies have 30 days to give an objection, and yet we're still holding the developers hostage 60, 90 days, even though that time lapsed, I think that's a problem. If we're going to hold the builders to a timetable, you have to provide these responses at this time, and we have to hold these agencies' time periods as well.
I agree that we need to make sure that the city is, works with developers and making sure that we have an housing both affordable and, as Mr. Ingram said, unaffordable. However, I think the market will drive it, but we want to make sure, because people are moving to our area for the quality of life, we want to make sure that these, we're not necessarily just approving developments here and there, we want to make sure that quality of life is still sustained by the people that are living in Marietta.
Next question from Mr. Conchak. What is your position on the use of eminent domain as a land acquisition strategy, and under what circumstances should a city conceivably use it?
I think we shouldn't use eminent domain unless we absolutely have to, because we shouldn't be taking private land from people who already own it. And, you know, we only, we should only use it if, you know, we need like to build something like a new hospital or a new school, you know, something that we really need in the city, so I'd only use it absolutely necessary.
I can tell you my four years on the city council, that we, as a city, discourage eminent domain. We would use equitable condemnation and other means of which to get there, that's been very achievable, and I think we will keep moving forward in that direction because we want to make sure that it's equitable to everyone where we can. There are going to be instances where it's harder to negotiate with others, and we have to deal with that, and we have to understand that private property owners have rights as well, and that's very important.
I think principle, I'm pretty sure everyone here agrees, in just about most cases, I am strongly against eminent domain. To answer the question, there are several instances where both the property owner and the city agree to go in together, allow the eminent domain process to move forward, a lot of times all of this tax benefits and other benefits. So in that situation, there is a benefit to the property owner, so that'll be one scenario where I would use it. I definitely do not like to approach abusing eminent domain as a tactic, a negotiation tactic. A lot of times that happens, you send them out with a warning letter stating that we are considering, we want to start implementing the process to start using eminent domain, and then you go to the table and start negotiating, so you're negotiating unfair advantage, I disagree with that aspect as well.
I think eminent domain should be used sparingly, unless there's a critical need. And I think that if there is something that, wherever the benefits would far outweigh the impact on the land, or I just really can't think of one, maybe a hospital, maybe a road, but beyond where there is no, actually even a road, it would be a way of the positive or the negative. However, I really am against infringing on the legal land ownership.
I agree with Mr. Knight's statements. First, I think you have to negotiate an equitable solution wherever possible and make all attempts to do so, and that it should be used only sparingly and when necessary for the benefit of the many at the cost of the few.
Last question for the evening. If you could only name one significant achievement as a legacy when you leave the council, what would that be? And we'll start with Mr. Ingram.
That I left the city a better place than I found it while I'm no longer on the dais, and that I've learned to appreciate the relationships that are out here and made a great deal of friends. We talk about being held to a standard. I used to always worry about my mother saying, "I'm disappointed in you." I never worried about my dad spanking me. When Barbara Nugent is mad at me, I don't like it. When Fay is mad at me, I don't like it, because it's like me going to one of my children, I'm disappointed in you. The state goes for a cast and climb because I consider everybody in this city a family. So I'm going to do the best I can to make sure that I don't let you down, and that I still have those relationships when I'm no longer on this council.
I actually asked myself that question when I was first thinking about running. I would like to maintain, I think the city is really rural, ram. I would like to be a part of the legacy, a part of the team, a part of the unity. That's something that I would like, I would like to keep fiscal conservative principles, smaller government, and maintain the quality of life for the next person who moves that attracted me to this wonderful city. So that would probably be mine, I'd like to keep the torch moving down.
I agree with Mr. Ingram, I would, really, the number one accomplishment would really be to leave the city in a better state than when you entered on the council. And really, to make sure that your decisions are to the benefit of the citizens of all of Marietta, also that, and that would include just improving the standard of life for everyone that lives here, and providing the services that our citizens have come to expect. Thank you.
I actually thought about this question and wrote down my response in case you asked it. So for the citizens, my legacy would include keeping our rural, small-town feel while we grow and develop, to maintain transparency and accountability. For the children and youth of our community, my vision would include great schools, parks, pools, recreation opportunities, our youth center, and again, free community. For families, my legacy wish would be a place where you and your families and your children's childrens can continue to live, work, and play. For our veterans, I see a center for their enjoyment and respect from our citizens to them. I envision a business-friendly environment as a legacy where we are known for the best in developmental services for applicants, builders, and developers. And for everyone, I envision a safe, well-planned, resourceful city where neighbors know each other and help each other when needed.
I want my legacy to be that I left Marietta in a better place. You know, I wanted us to be a smaller government, hoping that this handles some of the regulations and taxes that we don't need as a city, more business-friendly environment, and that we are winning as a city.
And I will start in reverse order with Mr. Conchak, with your one-minute closing statement. Sum everything up, tell us why we should vote for you.
I think you should vote for me if you want smaller government, less taxes, less regulation, thriving businesses, opportunity for everybody, not just a couple wealthy people. I just want to make Marietta the best city that it could be, I want it to be the safest place that you could raise your family on, and I hope that you'll write me in for District Five.
For District Two, I think Marietta's total future is bright. We have good citizens, strong leadership, and the resources necessary to build our dreams. We need to leverage every opportunity that we have and explore lots of opportunities and build on the foundation that we have in the last 27 years. I haven't made any promises in my election campaign, but I will promise tonight to be fair and impartial, accountable, transparent, and to always work to do what's best for our city of Marietta. Thank you.
Thank you for all, thank you all for coming. I really think that this is the, the citizen engagement in our city is really the, what the founders were meaning when they were setting up the democracy that they did. I promise to provide thoughtful choices, I promise to do my research, I promise to help out in any way I can, and be open and available to all citizens of Marietta, not just District Two. And I promise also to serve with honor and distinction, and it would be truly an honor to represent District Two. Thank you.
Likewise, thank you so much for coming out and listening to us, plead our cases. Thank you to the candidates who came, showed respect to the community, to give everyone here an opportunity to decide who they would like to vote for and support. I would love to have an opportunity to serve the community. I absolutely believe that outside of duty to God, I think serving the community is one of the greatest honors you can do. And in the last two years, I worked tirelessly trying to serve different communities. I'm also vice president for our regional NAACP, which covers 10 cities. So I understand regionalism, we deal with that all the time, but I just really would love the opportunity to serve you guys again, and I would try to do my best and be supportive of everyone. Thank you. Try a second.
So I can't promise you that I'm going to make Marietta a better place, because Marietta was a great place when I got on the city council. What I can tell you is a lot of people that served on this council handed the batons off to others, and I've been very blessed to have Mr. Wong, Mr. Ciardo, Mr. Lane, Mr. Gibbs as mentors that gave me a learning curve. And so I have two firemen, I have the historian. I was talking with Mr. Ciardo today, he was one of the people that helped acquire the land for our property, is for our city hall. So that's a privilege. And so I have the ability to sit and look and go, how am I going to take this and make sure in the next four years, how do I leave a legacy and the ability for the next person to grab the baton, to keep racing for the greatest city in Marietta County, which is the city of Marietta.
Thank you. Have a nice run with Mark. It's a thankless job, as they will tell you, to volunteer to help guide our city, and we appreciate them all stepping up.